These are.
I know, huh? I'm gonna be fired.
Okay, good morning. We're gonna start today's Wilson County Commissioners' Court meeting. Today is January sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the time is nine o'clock A.M. Let the minutes reflect that we have a full court session today. All Commissioners will pray. I think we're gonna have a prayer by.
Shall we bow our heads? Most gracious heavenly Father, this morning as I looked at Psalm fifty-seven, it said, "May you be lifted above all the earth, and your glory be known." Well, Father, there's something going on in Wilson County. We are not afraid to acknowledge our dependency upon you. In a world that's gone crazy, Father, we're not afraid to take a stand. And you've blessed this kind of a stand, not our brand, but for your glory. Our elected officials, Lord, often work tireless hours way beyond the clock. They make decisions that don't please everybody, but they're doing the best they can. They're working hard, Lord God, to make sure that the money goes where it needs to go. And that upsets some people, but it sure helps a lot of other people. So we come before you this morning humbly that you'll continue to guide the leadership of this county. Lord, us who are citizens, may we do more than just look to somebody else to do it. Help us, in a sense, police our own neighborhoods and streets. Help us be sensitive, Lord God, to the needs of others. And Father, as we, as one, work together for your glory, yep, Lord God, you're gonna be known even more. And we've seen you do great things in the past, and we expect things to continue great. We thank you for allowing us to be here. May we continue to be solid and work together for your glory. And thank you, Father, in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ, in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Applause. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. Our president, to be our Texas. One state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, we're gonna move to item number three on the agenda of the comments. I understand we have a couple of citizens signed up. Mr. Donald Frank.
Good morning. I know most of you all, I would always show that coming into the new Commissioners' Court, that you'll continue to work for the progress and everything in this county and state. I have two things to bring up. One of the ones being a, I've asked in the past Judge Jackson and some of them if the county had a community development committee to seek out new kinds of things to develop as far as looking at Guadalupe County, all their warehousing, all their factories and everything else. And we're sitting here in Wilson County, and we have nothing. We haven't progressed. We have car dealers, the greatest amount of everything developed, and all the money that comes in is from the homeowners. I think that we could do a better job of seeking out some development in the county by some corporations or whatever. We just never have, I haven't ever seen it being done, you know, and I was told that we, the county didn't have one. I think that'd be a good committee, get somewhat to set up to operate and try to get some development into the county. Secondly, the one thing I'd like to brought up, and Judge Jackson had his parting comments that one of the things he wanted to do was a unit road system that has been talked about in the past but never pushed. If you look what county, what Commissioners' Court has established in Guadalupe County with their unit road system, I know it's expensive deal. I know it takes money to develop, but the project of having a centralized, one person in charge of the roads, one person in charge of all the equipment, instead of having four different yards, four different sets of equipment, and the development thereof, I know it would take, right now, the Commissioners do their job, but if you have one person do that, the Commissioners would do other jobs that they're supposed to be doing, as far as not only taking care of the roads and taking all care of all the headaches. I would think that if you develop some kind of committee to look at that, to look at all the, how it's done in other counties, I think that would be something, well, worth forever. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, and I hope you all do a good job.
Thank you, sir.
Our next public comment will be Mr. Edwin Baker.
Judge Commissioners, I just wanted to introduce to you our Texas Department of Emergency Management Liaison that's been assigned to our county. He is Jason Miller. I was told at the beginning his name was Jason Moore, and I was like, I don't know it, Jason Moore, and then Jason Miller called me, and I said, oh, now I know who it is. I've been introducing him as Jason Moore, but this time I'm gonna introduce him as Jason Miller. He's, he lives in Wilson County, from Wilson County. He raised his family in Wilson County, or is raising his family in Wilson County, and he lives in the Deuce School area. He is gonna be housed in our building, the Emergency Operations Center. We got him an office, and he's getting set up in there. He was hired December fifteenth, came to our county on December the nineteenth, and has been here ever since. He's here to assist us, emergency management, with any state needs or something coming down from the state to do, and we got a list right now of stuff we're getting done that I'm gonna get him to help us with. Jason's background is in emergency medical and emergency management. He has a background. This is Jason Miller.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller, you want to say a few words?
I just wanna thank Commissioners' Court. I will follow you, you have a very good job for Wilson County. I'm here to assist you in any way that I can be helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, we're gonna move to item number four, certificates of completion and awards. So we have one from the Avrilife Extension Certificate of Completion, the DG Young Institute of County Government's awards. This certificate to Ruby Camarillo. Is Ruby here?
No, sir.
For successfully completing thirteen hours of educational training during the fortieth annual DG Young School for Tax Assistance and Collecting in Yalston, Texas. So our congratulations to Ruby. Is there any other certificates or awards? All right. Number five, approved bonds of Henry L. Whitman, Jr., Russell Keane, John Aiken, Deborah Bryan, Genevieve Montenius, Christina Moots, Jared Shaw, Kenneth D. Griffin, Connie Terry, and Monica Rutevitz. Commissioners, these are those bonds that were needed. Thank you. And there is no, no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept these so that I can sign them.
I'll make a motion to approve the bonds for Henry L. Whitman, Jr., Russell Keane, John Aiken, Deborah Bryan, Genevieve Montenius, Christina Moots, Jared Shaw, Kenneth D. Griffin, Connie Terry, and Monica Rutevitz.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Perdola to accept and approve the bonds. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion on entertaining a motion to accept, I'm sorry, we already did that. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Item number six, extension activity reports, and we have some handouts that need to come out, or? Is there one for each one of us, or is this, they're all here?
There should be one.
There should be.
Yes.
So our Avrilife folks, do you have anything that you need to come up and tell us about?
So we wanted to announce that we had a group of young men.
Come on up.
Oh, there we go. It's up. Okay. So. So if y'all have any questions about the extension report, feel free to ask us at any time. It was called, should've been emailed, whatever, it's easier for y'all. But we did want to announce that we had a group of young men just finishing competing at the national contest in Denver on Thursday. This is the second year that we've had a group of kiddos go to nationals, and the second year that they've got first place in one nationals. So we're very proud of them. You, if you see it here, we have Hayden Hayaski. He came back from prison just to compete for the contest. Next is Luke Scrimner. He is a senior at Stockdale ISD. And then Logan Baker is, he came back from Texas A&amp;M to compete for the contest. And finally, Joshua Scrimner. He is in high school at Stockdale ISD as well. So we just wanted to fudge on with that. We just got back, and hopefully they're all back at school.
What was your competition?
So this one was the SCS Ilithot. So they studied all things family and consumer sciences, so sewing, food and nutrition, health, safety, all kinds of things. The contest consisted of a written exam, and they had some identifying items that they had to look at in a presentation. So it wasn't a small feat, especially with those two young men at college studying and then getting them back here to compete for the contest. We're very proud of them, and all their hard work.
And they placed as a team first, but then they also, three of them placed individually, the third, the second, and a first place individually, so.
I know most of y'all have heard me say, Wilson County and 4H, we are very competitive. It's kinda crazy, competitive they are, but they study, they work hard, and they do a great job, so we're very proud of them. And we're very grateful for their parents and their coaches, their adult leaders that take the time to really hone in on all their skills. That's it.
Any other comments, Commissioner? We're proud of them, too.
Thank you.
Item number seven, Commissioner Perdola, please say three.
I'd like to introduce Mark Andrews, a tech stop here in Florisville, and Will Hockit, tech stop in Bronfels. He'd like to give us an update on what's going on in Wilson County for the upcoming year.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I have a handout with some projects that we have in the future.
Come on. Do you want to like, uh, one more?
Thank you. Just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself. I am Will Hockit. I'm Tech Stop's area engineer, our local representative for the Bronfels Area Office, which includes Comal, Guadalupe, and Wilson Counties. Mr. Mark Andrews is my local maintenance supervisor here in Florisville, takes care of a lot of the local issues with maintenance and our roadways. Wanted to go over some of the projects that we have coming up here in Wilson County. On this list, the project spans the next ten years, if you look to the back, and most of them, you'll see clustered are silco projects, like you see in FY twenty-three. Those are really our routine maintenance projects that we do on a lot of our FM roads, state highways, and some sections of US one eighty-one. But there are some significant projects. You look in twenty twenty-three, there's a project on one eighty-one where we're installing a median cable barrier. So one initiative that we're taking with a lot of our two-lane divided highways like one eighty-one is trying to install that cable, that cable barrier continuously through the county. So this first project is showing that it should have led into twenty twenty-two. Below that, our US eighty-seven project, this is a bridge replacement at Clifton Branch, just west of Stockdale, US eighty-seven. That project actually went to bid last week, though we have a contractor, it's S&amp;B, that will be replacing that old structure at Clifton Branch. The next project in twenty twenty-three is County Road two thirty-five. The CSA is the oh-nine, one-five, one-four, zero-four-five. This is another bridge replacement at County Road two thirty-five in Dry Creek. Significant with this project, this is part of our off-system bridge project where the state will replace a county road bridge that has a low sufficiency rating, a low efficiency rating, or needs replacement. We have done several of these here in Wilson County, most recently in Commissioner Martin's area, County Road one oh-four at Costa Creek, and Commissioner Perdola's area, County Road three forty-seven are still crossing at the Civil Little Creek. And this program basically identifies bridges that need replacing. I believe this is an eight-twenty match from the county to where the state funds eighty percent, the county funds twenty percent, or the county can produce that twenty percent match in local drainage projects or other projects to account for that sum as well. But a really good program. We replaced these two, I believe previously, County Road three forty-eight at Dry Creek. Might have the creek name wrong. But we're gonna have the two thirty-five bridge coming up, should let March of twenty twenty-three as well. Some other safety projects as far as F twenty-five, seventy-nine, to install signal warning curves on this roadway. And then there's a hike and bike trail also under twenty twenty-three. That is a transportation alternative project that we do with some of the local municipalities. So I believe this one here is with the city of Florisville, where we're participating with Florisville to build a hike and bike trail near Hospital Boulevard, which actually follows the El Camino Real Trail. Twenty twenty-four, another list of silco roads, but at the bottom of that list is another sidewalk project that we're doing with the city of La Verena to add sidewalks along thirteen forty-six and DL Best. If you turn to the back, some more silco, some more one eighty-one safety projects. But the last project in twenty twenty-five would be a significant one where we're looking to widen and rehab F thirteen forty-four going to be Carons County Line. That ties in with an existing project that's underway right now, where we're built, where we are rebuilding thirteen forty-four from F five forty-one, County Road two oh-nine. So if you driven that roadway, it's kinda tore up right now, traffic in a one-way configuration. This is a continuation of that project. Two projects, and I apologize for those not being on the list, really significant projects. The first one being the widening of US eighty-seven from the Bear County line to thirteen forty-six in La Verena. We're actively working on that schematic to go from the four-lane undivided that we have now to a two, for a four-lane divided. So we'll have the grass medium down US eighty-seven, similar to what it is in Bear County. So you drive from Bear County, soon as you get to the county line, it comes together. We got a couple of fatalities in the last couple of years, and really got the people's attention, and so kinda pushed this project really high on our priority list. It's not listed. It should go to bid fiscal year twenty twenty-four, but we're actively working on the schematic, environmental clearance, and acquiring right-of-way along that corridor. And one more project that's not shown on here is State Highway one twenty-three from the Guadalupe-Wilson County line south to Business Eight Seven in Stockdale. Believe that project's gonna let fiscal year twenty-four. And that project is another rehab, I believe back in the thirties, the Stockdale Highway was constructed, and it was all concrete pavement. Well, over the years, we built new road on top of the concrete pavement, which causes a lot of maintenance headaches. So this project will go in, remove that old concrete highway, rebuild State Highway one twenty-three, similar to what we're doing in Guadalupe County. So just another extension of that widening project. That should let fiscal year twenty twenty-four come correct. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Can you accept that y'all are working on right now Highway eighty-seven from Post Oak Road, right in that, south of there?
Yes, sir.
Or is Blackjack Road?
We have two safety projects going on near La Verena, the one you're referring to goes from La Verena down to Post Oak Road. We're basically gonna widen, and we're gonna continue the two-way left turn lane. So a lot of, lots of subdivisions, a lot of access onto eighty-seven. We're seeing a lot of accidents for people turning left. So we're gonna widen to east side of eighty-seven and just right the center turn lane, so those that are crossing traffic to make a turn can at least get out of the way of long-term traffic.
Sort of kinda in between Post Oak Road and Blackjack Road?
Should in right at Post Oak Road. Yes, sir.
It goes, so it goes a little bit past County Road three forty-two?
Yes.
And then it starts, it starts just a little bit before Post Oak Road, but that's the closest limits, but.
It originally stopped at Post Oak Road, but there was about a five-hundred foot gap from there in County Road three forty-two for a project that we did going into Southern Springs, so we're gonna take it all the way to the logical turn line, the County Road three forty-two.
So it will go to three forty-two?
Go past three forty-two, a little bit south.
Okay. That's a good way to where y'all are working now.
Just, just to.
Right now, they're just doing the extension of the culverts and stuff like that, and some of the shoulders. The shoulders will also be widened up to where people could pull off the road and turn into their subdivisions where they're not out in the travel lane.
So it will pick up a civil bridge that's south of, south of Blackjack Road?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another safety project in La Verena itself on thirteen forty-six between eighty-seven and seven twenty-five, similar type project where we're gonna widen and extend the two-way left turn lane to the intersection of seven twenty-five and thirteen forty-six, open by the high schools.
Seven seventy-five.
Seven seventy-five, I'm sorry. Seven twenty-five. Sometimes they get mixed up with here. A lot of sevens and a lot of fives.
So y'all are gonna widen that thirteen forty-six there between eighty-seven, seven seventy-five, or?
There's a section on thirteen forty-six where there is a two-way left turn lane existing that's from eighty-seven, roughly about halfway down, and then it comes back to an undivided section. We're just gonna widen and mirror that, that center turn lane all the way to seven seventy-five.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
But if you have any questions, concerns, or comments, you have my email address, shoot me an email, give me a call, and try to answer any question or accommodate any needs as much as you can.
Thank you.
There's just one more. Should've been closed up, but seven seventy-five, where they're doing the subdivision turn lane over there by Deer Creek, it's just about done, and they're clearing that up. That's to get people to where they can make their left and their right turns, and not, not stay out there in the high-speed traffic out there.
Deer Ridge.
Deer Ridge, yes. That's the only other one. That should be closing out real soon.
Thank you, Mr. Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Y'all can talk about the county existence program?
We can, we can touch bases on that if you will.
Yeah, why don't you just give them an intro to the county existence?
Yeah, so with a lot of new Commissioners and the judging on Wilson County, well, all the areas that Wilson County is responsible for, we have a obligation to offer material, resources throughout the year to each of the precincts, to each of the counties. It's probably around twenty-seven thousand dollars in material. What we do is we schedule meetings with each of the Commissioners to see what their needs are as far as material, signs, just, just all, any of the culverts and stuff like that, and then we can order that, and we send you a letter. I don't know if you've seen any of those letters?
I have not.
But you have to pretty much request it, even though we've already coordinated what they want ahead of time.
And then we. Make sure that the Commissioners will make sure of requests.
Oh, yeah. But, and then we just kinda, it's like, it's not at the full cost, we just get credit. It doesn't cost the county anything, it just comes right off the top of our.
I didn't realize y'all could do culvert also.
Well, there's some, there's some of that if we have it in hand. There's a lot of stuff if we have it in stock that we could get from our warehouse that we could do that, or if we have excess for projects, we could do that as well.
Signs, barricades.
Signs, barricades, cones, flags, material. So that's going to be scheduled towards the end of this month, and we'll do it, each individual Commissioner, to see what they're looking for, and then we'll compile all this, and we'll kinda weed our way through that to get to the number. My goal is this year to have that done by March, because that's when we're gonna start over in the material. That way, all the material's on hand. And then if we do any base repairs on the road, we can only take the material from that road, and we give that to the counties as well. And that's like a fine hauler for, for, for base repair material, which is, you know, pretty, pretty good stuff, most of the time. But we do a lot of the coordination individually with the Commissioners. That's how it's been done in the past, and you wanna look at that and come up with another way of doing that, but it seems to be, we ask what they want, and then we tell you what they said they want. But like I say, my name's Mark Andrews, and I'll hand out cards. Most of the Commissioners already know who I am, and the door's always open. Direct communication back and forth on that, so.
Commissioner, just let me know what you need, and I'll select, that is, where do you possibly?
Thank you. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
We move to item number eight on the agenda, Rebecca's ribbon permits and development director.
All right. So we have a non-standard class request for at County Road three forty-seven, four thirty-eight, precinct three. The property owner is proposing to divide a thirteen point eight acre tract into a ten acre tract of three point eight acre tract. It met all the requirements. There's already existing meters and electric utilities at both properties, and they received a favorable recommendation from the development.
I'll make a motion that we approve it since it's received a favorable recommendation.
I'll say. Motion been made by Commissioner Perdola, seconded by Commissioner Keane regarding the non-standard type variances in County Road three forty-seven, or, at four thirty-eight, precinct three. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. All right, we're gonna move to then item number nine, Genevieve Montenius County Court on the minutes.
In which the minutes have been reviewed by the county attorney and the judge's office.
Okay, there's two of them.
The two.
And commissioners, take a moment for you to look at the minutes. Actually, there's two in there, so, for December twenty-seventh and December twelfth. Any questions, Commissioner? I'll make the motion that further the minutes. Motion has been made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Peraldo, that we accept the minutes for December twelfth and December twenty-seventh. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move to, uh, agenda item number ten, Bailen Moffer, human resource specialist. Hey, Roland Postmel, King.
Good morning. Rosalie Bailey was hired as an interim jail administrator for the Sheriff's Department, making thirty-one sixty-seven per hour effective January fifth. Albert Venna was hired as a corrections officer for the Sheriff's Department, making eighteen oh-three per hour and thirty-nine thousand three seventy-seven fifty-two annually, effective December twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Jose Sanchez was hired as a patrol deputy for the Sheriff's Department, making twenty-two sixty per hour for forty-nine thousand three sixty-eight oh-one annually, effective January ninth. And Andres Ramos was, has resigned from his position as rodent and bridge laborer for precinct one, effective January fifth.
Understanding that doesn't need a vote?
She's forgiven.
Thank you. I have silence.
Thank you.
We're gonna move to, um, agenda item number eleven, Orlando El Camino County owner, bills and funding.
So I have, um, the bills for you that I reviewed, and they're pretty totaling one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two ninety-eight, and eighty-five cents. Um, and then I'll go, since this is, uh, first time for some of you, I'll, um, explain to you how to read this report. Um, so this is your, um, unpaid invoice report. So, um, every two or three weeks, depending on, on court date, um, my office gets all of the invoices. We review them, enter them, and then they're sent out. You saw the, we saw the stuff that was sent out that y'all want to review and approval. So the way you read this report, you'll see it's broken out by each department in the first column, uh, starting with county judge, county clerk, human resources, and goes through. Uh, your next three columns are just, uh, our claim numbers and the actual invoice number. And then description is what actually was purchased, and then the last line, the last column is the dollar amount. And, um, it gives you the rank total by department. And it's broken out by fund, so the first, uh, first four pages are fund twelve hundred. And then it goes on to your additional funds, and you'll see the funds up on top underneath Wilson County unpaid invoice report. It has the fund number, which is a four-digit number, and then, um, it says the fund. So it says twelve original funds. So when you go to page four, it'll change to, uh, page five, I'm sorry, fourteen hundred American rest complaint fund. And that's how it's entered. Each one, you'll see each individual road, uh, bridge, precinct fund, the library, um, any of our other funds that have, that this, or this still.
Commissioner, I need to ask a question. Uh, when is this ready to go, this report?
That is usually ready to go on the day that Amanda, my office, sends out the emails that the invoices are ready for y'all's signature. This report is ready to go, because there's usually, by that point, there are no changes. So it's usually either late Thursday afternoon or Friday morning before report.
Yes, sir.
The cutoff is on Wednesday at noon to turn in, to submit invoices to my office to run.
Commissioner, what if you, that issue y'all have is that we need to take a good look at it?
Yes, sir.
Can we arrange that, please? I mean, there's a lot, I mean, I.
So the, the, at the time that she sends out the email with the invoices, uh, she can attach this to that email, just to.
Yeah, and I'd like to look at it too before we, I mean, for the sake of expediency, you know, we could go right to something that we may have a question, but at least we get a chance to examine it before.
Absolutely. As soon as it's ready, I'll have her send it out to the court. Um, also, so that if you do have any questions, it's better to ask me before today, because I wouldn't be able, if you had a question on a specific purchase there, I wouldn't be able to tell you right now, because invoices are in my office, so.
Exactly why?
Yeah.
So we have.
And we're about to go to the upper room.
Right. Yeah. So, uh, Commissioner, just so that, for your reference, so when all of the invoices come through my office, technically, they've already been approved by my office. You're approving for the treasurer to cut the payment for it off. So that, that kind of helps.
When we sign the, you know, back, it's approved at that point.
Yeah, that means the elected official has already reviewed their invoices, because I've already reviewed and said, yes, if, if they're within budget, it's a valid purchase, et cetera.
And it was effortless.
And that's why they, yeah, they knew that all the checks balances had already been done, so this was just giving the court a summary, uh, every commissioner's court. But you certainly, if there are any questions or you want copies of the invoices, we certainly just provide that.
I started to tell you when you said how to read this with a magnifying glass.
Help us think in a second, please.
Well, email will help. Y'all can zoom it to two hundred percent.
Where's that bigger screen, John? Because first thing I told him, I go, I gotta do better than this idiot's laptop on that one more time.
You're gonna start making all DUI exams before you're left.
You wouldn't be able to have a corner.
Commissioner, if y'all have any questions? I'll make the motion that further bills. Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Peraldo to accept the financial report.
Bills.
Bills. Sorry. Well, it is a financial report and bills, so.
Right. I don't have the annual, because you're in a financial report for this course.
Any discussion? There's none. I call for a vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes. Thank you. Before we entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting, uh, my colleague here, Commissioner Peraldo, I'm gonna call him Eagle Eye from now on, noticed a, uh, a mistake on our agenda. It's actually January the ninth at the top and at the bottom, at the middle of it does say January ninth. So can we get that corrected? Well, the sixth was the day it was posted. Is that the day it's posted?
Yes, it is.
So it doesn't have to coincide with that?
No, posted the sixth and today's the ninth.
Stand corrected. I'm a rookie.
You said today that this, this report's gonna be no January.
Say, so for the record, it's January the ninth. There you go. Okay. Not bad for a, for a review. I'm back, so. All right, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion. I hadn't spoke up the whole time.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Martin. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Against? All right, we adjourn. Thank you all for showing up.
Please don't leave until I get y'all to sign this.